... The Pledge of Allegiance.
And please let the record note that with the exception of Ms. Anderson and Ms. Kares, all council members are present this evening. We have minutes to the meeting of December 17th. Without objection, they’ll stand approved. Seeing none, we will move on to our scheduled committee meetings. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks. We have two weeks of committee meetings tonight. The Public Works Committee will meet this coming Wednesday, that’s the 9th of January, from 9:15 in the morning to 9:55. Administration and Finance Committee follows from 10 o’clock to 10:20. Landis and Planning is next from 10:25 to noon. And on the 14th of January, that’s, looks like next week, Monday, right? The Committee of the Whole will meet at the Doubletree Hotel from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Otherwise, all those first three meetings are meeting right here in the council chambers at 140 West Pine. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee’s schedule this evening? Seeing none, we’ll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Yes, ma’am?
Hi. My name is Letitia Romelo. The day after Christmas, a public social media post was put on Facebook regarding Missoula’s mountain lion benches that were replaced with lean-to structures. The initial post was as follows: “This used to be a bench. Now it’s a leaning post. These are popping up around the pav in Missoula. Can’t let the homeless get too comfortable. What about the old and disabled that need a place to sit waiting for the bus? It pisses me off.” The several comments from Missoulians and other folk that followed the post were a majority of dislikes and severe disapprovals. A couple of comments and examples of those were, quote, “I saw these two and thought WTF. So ridiculous. Why can one nap on a covered bench?” Also saw armrests to make it uncomfortable to lie down. I just don’t get it. And then there’s wonderful places like Break that put out food to take and has a sign saying warmth and shelter without purchase. More of this thinking moving forward, please! Exclamation mark. Another comment was, “And the crazy thing about this is it’s in front of the apartment specifically for low-income elderly, disabled, and people suffering from traumatic brain injuries. You know, the people who A) don’t drive and actually use the bus, and B) need places to sit. A lawsuit waiting to happen. We should build some random outdoor living rooms like the free libraries.” People fought in wars so that we could have proper benches. We’re going to ask grandmas and war vets and all of the old folks who worked their butts off for years and as a result are tired enough to want to fully sit down. We’re going to ask them to lean on that wretched symbol of becoming a town of a-holes.” And the last, one of the last comments, “Wow, y’all. I’ve lived in big cities, Houston, Seattle, Salt Lake, and never have I seen anything like this. This is disgusting. How vile and downright cruel. Even inmates and max attention centers get treated better than the homeless around here. What’s wrong with these people? I thought I moved to a place where people took care of each other and brotherly love was the way of life here.” These are just a handful of comments that day and the following weeks. As a Missoulian, I highly disapprove of how the lack of city ordinances on hostile architecture allowed for mountain lion to replace benches with a useless structure that only says to the public, “You are not to sit here. Move on.” I wanted to read definition of hostile architecture.
And we’re about three and a half minutes into it, so...
Okay. I will skip that. I’ll wrap it up.
Thanks.
Um, “I ask that my city have useful and welcoming structures that encourages community and hospitality. As I understand, the city council cannot change mountain lion’s bench decisions legally. However, city ordinances can be put to make sure the hostile architecture is not allowed to be put anywhere in Missoula. Several collisions of people in Missoula are asking that city council formally state that Missoula will not support these type of inhumane structures in the future.” And there is a continued trend, as there is a continued trend in gentrification in neighborhoods, horrible housing disparity between wages and rent mortgages, and more touristy hotels being built in Missoula, we will not allow for the most vulnerable and ignored people, such as the houses, to be pushed away with hostile architecture. Missoula needs to be a place where people take care of one another and look after the most vulnerable. Only in this way may we progress together.”
Thank you, ma’am. Any other general public comments this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Kevin Hunt of 308 Parkside Lane and also 557 Minnesota Avenue, East Missoula. I am dependent upon mountain lion for medical appointments and my other transportation. I support the call just made for an ordinance that would prohibit this kind of oppressive architecture, and I further call upon the city council to take steps, I’ll enumerate in a moment. Modification of benches in the area around the Pavarello Center is an act of aggression upon the underclass who lack any representation or power whatsoever undertaken without public hearing, which is the most fundamental and minimal requirement of democratic governance. I am a partially disabled person. At age 44, I developed narcolepsy. A horrible feature of narcolepsy is something called cataplexia, sudden loss of muscle tone. It strikes me when I’m standing up. When I feel an episode coming on, if I don’t find a place to sit down safely very soon, I will suffer a closed head injury. I’ve suffered three of them in Missoula since I moved back here after growing up here 39 years ago. The modifications to these transit benches pose significant danger to me and others who are afflicted with various disorders and disabilities. In the past several weeks, I’ve also unfortunately been witnessing my octogenarian mother develop a bad progressive gait disorder and degeneration of her vision. Thousands of Missoulians are in this same position. What are they to do? What are the ones who become poor to do when they become reliant upon public transit due to loss of driving privileges and their disabilities are not only not accommodated but exacerbated by these kinds of hostile architecture? The homeless are, by orders of magnitude, far more likely to be victims of crime than to perpetrate crime. This arbitrary response of mountain lion focused on the vicinity of a homeless assistance facility is outrageous. That is what happens when there’s poor oversight of public agencies and no opportunity for people to be heard prior to decisions of this sort. Knee-jerk reactions taken to discomfort, a marginalized segment of the afflicted, are unjust and are no substitute for either a reasoned response or failure to adequately invest in solutions to the underlying problems. The moral imperatives of this matter transcend politics. They transcend all the isms and all the schisms, but this current approach is a moral cataclysm. In addition to an ordinance, I call upon you, the city council, to adopt a resolution. You may not be able to overturn what mountain lion does, but you have a bully pulpit. I ask that you adopt a resolution imploring mountain lion forthwith to do the following three things. One, reverse this action. Two, establish a citizen task force to look into this issue and make recommendations. And three, convene a public hearing prior to taking further actions addressing this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Other general public comments this evening? Mr. Moore? Officer, we’re good.
I’m sorry. Uh, Mr. Moore, this is a review of an action by the MRA. By the way, I again request and make a demand to the extent I can that the MRA be disbanded, and your authority don’t have anything to do with the MRA, including appointing new directors and so forth. I attended the meeting last week, week or two ago, where the MRA approved $150,000 to the Trailhead River Sports Project. Mr. Frank, and this is the minutes, uh, this is the agenda and recommendation by the, uh, by the MRA to the board of the MRA. Mr. Frank intends a new location to be premier, the premier rafting and river recreation shop in the northwest. Those poor folks in Seattle, boy, they’re, they’re, they’re a look. He started the business in nineteen, or the business was started in 1974. The business has thrived in the last location. Now inventory is hampering business growth. Then the paragraph discusses several things he wants to do. Main thing, I think, is putting in some windows. And by the way, while you’re listening to this, this property is owned by the Southgate Mall. We definitely want to give them some more assets. The Trailhead’s vision for the building’s exterior is well beyond its budget for the building. Total cost of the project, $2,050,000, of which $625,000 is the estimate for renovation and construction costs, including the 10% contingency. Of the amount, $150,000 is estimated to install proposed window truth. The facility improvement program is type presented here as the windows of the northwest corner, $150,000, replacement of existing windows, doors, $18,000, exterior painting, $18,000, 10% $18,000 contingency. Don’t let me forget that I want to make one point here is that my house doesn’t match my vision. So I want y’all to give me enough money to make my house meet my vision. That’s what you’re doing here. So now I want you to do it for me. A paragraph called “The Investment Spin-Off” enlists a lot of good things. This project will be very active, and the envisioned exterior improvement should help validate the viability of smaller retail businesses using the neighborhood. I don’t know if y’all know it or not, but if he paid for the whole $150,000 that taxpayers are going to give him as a welfare check, all of these good things will still be there. All of these good progress here in U. Get the minutes will still be there. So you don’t have to give him $150,000 to make this viable and so forth. Unbelievable. So is the...
We let you go to four minutes because you’ve had a couple of weeks off?
Yes. I did have two weeks off, so I get another. Logistical considerations...
That was me, that was me saying you’re at four minutes.
Oh, oh, oh. So can I finish this? This was a nice lady...
We’ll see you next week.
This nice lady was able to wrap it up, so I’m requesting that I wrap up.
Again, she’s not here every week.
Oh, you want me to wrap up next week?
That’d be perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other general public comments this evening? All right. To let the record note that Ms. Kares is in attendance, we will move on, ladies and gentlemen, to our consent agenda items. There were approved unanimously in council committees, and we save a little time on Mondays by considering these items all at once. Ms. Raybine will read them so that folks in the audience and those at home will know what we’re considering, and we’ll take comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
We have four items on tonight’s consent agenda, and three of them are claims, which are the city’s accounts payable. So item number one is to ratify claims in the amount of $838,048.05 for checks that were dated Christmas Day, December 25th, 2018. Number two is to ratify claims in the amount of $307,726.05 for checks that were dated New Year’s Day, January 1st, 2019. And number three is to approve claims in the amount of $1,743,544.01 for checks that are dated tomorrow, January 8th, 2019. And the fourth item is to appoint James McDonald and Steve Adler for the professional positions, and Bruce Haroldson for a regular member, and Jamie Lockman for alternate number-two position on the Historic Preservation Committee for terms effective immediately and ending on December 31st of 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Anyone in the audience care to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? Mr. Moore?
There’s a seven, excuse me, there’s a $700 and some thousand dollar check written to the Southgate Mall. Of course, that’s a minor, minor insignificant portion of the millions and 10, $20 million you’re going to pay to put this little ruin in there with four, um, four roundabouts. I don’t think that check should be paid. Negotiate with them to get him to say, wait a minute, hasn’t the city given you enough welfare check, and you just not take that payment? They might do it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Questions or comments from council members? Mr. Almo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to separate item three from the consent agenda, please, just for the simple fact of what Mr. Moore actually just stated, that we’re giving nearly three quarters of a million dollars to Southgate Mall and Associates for Mary Avenue improvements. I understand there are some benefits to the city for that, but I also understand that the Southgate Mall, which is a massive corporation, also got a substantial benefit by being able to get that grocery store in there, so I am not going to approve, or vote to approve that. Thank you.
And which one was that, three? Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we’ll have a roll call vote on items one, two, and four?
On items one, two, and four of the consent agenda, we’ll start the roll call with Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Debary? Debary votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. And West? West votes yes. Would anyone be like to change your vote? Eleven eyes and one absent.
And those three items are approved. And on item number three?
On item number three of the consent agenda, Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Debary? Debary votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes no. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. And Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Would anyone be like to change your vote? That’s 10 eyes, one nay, and one absent.
And item number three is approved. I’m unaware of any comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum this evening. We do have, uh, one special presentation comes in the form of a proclamation, whereas Ballet Beyond Borders will aim to bring together some of the most outstanding young dancers from around the world and serve as an introduction to an international career, and whereas Ballet Beyond Borders will promote and enhance the culture and creative diversity of the city of Missoula to the benefit of our citizens, our creative community, and our visitors. And whereas the city of Missoula is poised to establish itself as a city on the cutting edge of art, culture, education, entertainment, and support of creative industries, and whereas activities made available through Ballet Beyond Borders will bring recognition to the city of Missoula as a city on the leading edge of cultural activity and development, and whereas, uh, building on the city of Missoula’s reputation as a city of learning, a city that embeds cultural exchange, cultural curiosity, and cultural development as part of lifelong learning, now therefore I, John Engle, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby recognize the week of January 9th through 12th, 2019, as Ballet Beyond Borders Week. And I believe Ms. Kares was going to be here this evening, but I don’t see her, so we’ll make sure that she gets this proclamation at a later time. We will move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda, folks. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for, pardon me, considering items in a formal way and hearing from the public and following a staff report on each of these items. We’ll invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. We’ll begin this evening with an ordinance to amend Title VIII, uh, Title VIII, uh, Health and Safety to update the party responsible for hazardous vegetation, cutting, removal, or extermination, and to clarify language. Uh, and it’s a great day to talk about weeds. So, Troy, Mr. Monroe has our staff report this evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I’m Troy Monroe, Assistant City Engineer. Uh, what we have before you is just, um, a clarification, a cleanup of the weeds, hazardous weeds and vegetation, a portion of Title VIII, and the idea is to, um, expand it from just being nuisance weeds or fire hazard weeds to also include nuisances, um, other items like that, and to pull it from Fire Department, which only deals with the hazardous vegetation, to bring in Development Services, which will have the ability to look at it for all the different topics.
That’s it?
That’s it.
That works. Yeah, that was succinct, Mr. Monroe. We appreciate that. Uh, with that, I will open the public hearing on this ordinance cleanup. Anyone care to comment this evening? You just have to push Troy out of the way. All right. Seeing none. Are there questions from council members? Mr. Ramos? Uh, Mr. Debary?
Thanks, Mr. Monroe. Um, so the way I understand it is right now the ordinance addresses primarily hazard due to fire, fire, correct? And that’s why the Fire Department had previously been enforcing this?
That, that is correct in a sense. Um, if you look at the ordinance and how it’s been updated in, um, portion A, we’ve now brought up everything, including fire hazard, public safety visibility hazard, a public health hazard, and a public and private nuisance. Those items were included previously, and they were given to the Fire Department as being their responsibility, which they don’t care about. They care about the, um, fire hazard portion of it, which they will still be in charge of dealing with, but all the other items are now within Development Services.
Can I follow up? So now Development Services will be the, the organization or the part of the organization that fields a complaint, and it could be for, um, a tree that’s growing over a sidewalk or obstructing a view at a corner or something like that, and, and so Development Services will now be the, the point of contact, and you’ll deal with the complaint and forward it onto the Fire Department if necessary. Is that correct?
That is correct. So code enforcement will be the ones that will be reviewing all that. Um, Fire Department will still have their own ability to deal with any type of fire hazard at any time.
Further questions?
If I may ask a, a change in here. Um, on part C of this first one, I think there was just a typo. The last sentence is underlined, and it just shouldn’t be a strike through.
We can deal with that. Further questions? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that on second and final reading, we adopt an ordinance amending Sections 8.40, .020 of Missoula Municipal Code entitled Hazardous Vegetation, Cutting, Removal, or Extermination, Property Owner’s Duty by City, and Section 840, 30, Hazardous Vegetation, Cutting, Removal, or Extermination, Collection of Charges, to change the responsibility for the hazardous vegetation program for the, from the Fire Department to Development Services and to clarify the language. I’d like to speak to it briefly.
Mr. Hess?
Uh, this is pretty straightforward. It’s a routine code cleanup, um, and it, as Mr. Monroe states, simply, uh, shifts responsibility from our, um, to our Code Compliance Division, which is a natural location for this. And, um, the clerical piece that Mr. Monroe pointed out, um, in section C, I, I guess I’ll, I’ll make a note that my motion reflects that, that change, um, but I just want to highlight that because that, um, really demonstrates that we’re not adding anything here. We’re not adding, um, this is exactly as the ordinance has been. Um, we’re simply, um, we’re not adding any criteria. We’re simply, um, changing the responsible entity.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. We’ve had a public hearing. We’ll have a roll call vote.
On the ordinance, um, Kares? Kares votes yes. Debary? Debary votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes no. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Would anyone be like to change your vote? That is 10 eyes, one nay, one absent.
And the ordinance is approved. Our next public hearing, uh, is on an ordinance amending Title 12 with regard to street, sidewalk, and public places and inspection. And Mr. Monroe has our staff report here as well.
Thank you. Again, Troy Monroe, Assistant City Engineer. Um, a little background as to how this has worked in the past. Um, as contractors built our sidewalks, they would call and ask for a forms inspection. The forms inspection was at the point where the subbase and everything of the, has been laid, the forms that the concrete would go into would be ready to go, and this is just prior to the concrete coming. The issue happened is that, um, the contractors have been relying on our inspectors to ensure that everything is done to the proper slopes needed for ADA, and a lot of times, there’s too much sidewalk for them to go out and measure everything, and even with them measuring everything, there can still be changes that happen once they leave. So what this revision does is has them come and call for an inspection when the subbase is ready to go. That way, we ensure that the proper amount of concrete could be placed, and then they do another inspection at the end to ensure that the construction meets ADA standards. But it’s up to the contractor to actually build it to the right standards.
Thank you, sir. With that, I will open the public hearing on this ordinance amendment. Anyone care to comment? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Harp?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Monroe, what happens in the event that the contractor pours the concrete and it ends up not being ADA compliant? What happens in that situation?
Based on both federal, state, and local laws, it has to meet ADA standards. So when concrete is poured that doesn’t need it, it’s, has to be replaced. It’s chipped out and re-poured again to the proper slopes and that kind of stuff.
And then a follow-up. So I’m assuming that with the change of the sequencing of the inspection, that in effect what you’re trying to do is get ahead of it and really try and prevent a mispour, if you will?
Yes, but we also are putting the, um, requirement on the contractor. They’re the ones that have the plans, are the ones that know the methodology of pouring concrete. It’s up to them to make sure that they, they do it properly. Our inspectors are out there for a short period of time and are just basically out there to ensure that it looks generally like what the plans show, but they shouldn’t be responsible for getting every nuisance of, of slopes and that kind of stuff.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Further questions? Ms. West?
So I know the city has a list of licensed and bonded and insured contractors that can work on sidewalks. Is there also, um, I guess, are, are you also making sure that contractors that work on these projects are aware of ADA standards? They should know what they’re doing?
Yes. So that they are required to be certified and bonded, but they also have to have an American Concrete Institute finisher do all the work. So there’s multiple steps on the contractor’s side to ensure that they’re doing it properly. Therefore, removing our inspectors from that is, shouldn’t affect the good quality that should be out there.
Further questions? Seeing none. Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, on second and final reading, I move adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 12.12 of Missoula Municipal Code entitled Curbs, Sidewalks, and Paving, Section 12.12.080, to update and clarify regulations for improvements in public rights of way, and Chapter 12.24 entitled Excavations, Section 12.24.037, to clarify processes for excavation permit fee refunds. Um, and I’d like to speak to... Um, and I'd like to speak to it again briefly.
Mr. Hess?
Again, a very straightforward, um, uh, ordinance change, uh, brought to us by the Engineering Division, which, um, I believe will, uh, simplify our processes, um, and, um, reduce any confusion as to whose response, the responsible party in these instances.
Further discussion? Seeing none. We've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. On motion approved, the ordinance, Dubarry. Dubarry votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Van Laesberg. Van Laesberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. And Kears. Kears votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? 11 eyes and one abstain.
And the motion is approved. Next, we have a resolution and ordinance amending the Front Street Urban Renewal District Plan, and our staff report this evening comes from Ms. Buchanan.
Ellen Buchanan, Director of Redevelopment Housing and Economic Development for the City. What you have in front of you tonight is a resolution of intention and an ordinance that would amend the Front Street Urban Renewal District Plan, the Urban Renewal Plan, to, um, approve or provide for tourism development as a commercial goal of the district. The reason that we're doing this is that when, when the Urban Renewal Plan was adopted, uh, I think in 2009, um, there, there was no anticipation that there would be the type of hotel development that we're seeing in downtown at this point, and particularly in that Urban Renewal District. And there was certainly no anticip- The, the thing that's driven this, or has been the catalyst for this right now, is the development of the Merck Hotel. Uh, there was no indication at the time that the Urban Renewal Plan was adopted that we would not have Macy's in downtown for years to come. Um, we did a, um, a downtown master plan during that period with, where we also anticipated that, uh, that Macy's would continue to be a catalyst project or an anchor, a retail anchor on the corner of, of Front and Higgins. And of course, we all know that, that didn't work out quite that way. Um, the urban renew- The, the Greater Downtown Master Plan, which followed the, the Front Street Urban Renewal Plan, did acknowledge the need for, um, additional hotel rooms in the downtown and did recognize that as an economic driver. In fact, called for in excess of, I think, 200 new hotel rooms over the life of that plan. So as we do quite frequently with Urban Renewal Plans, you, you can't anticipate everything that might happen in a district. Uh, when you have a major project, uh, particularly one that's going to require bonding, uh, that has to be declared an Urban Renewal Project if it's not already acknowledged in the plan. Uh, the hotel development was not, and therefore, the first step we have to do in, uh, before we can provide any funding for the Merck is we have to, uh, amend the plan to acknowledge that that is an Urban Renewal Project. So that's what is in front of you tonight. If you approve it, um, then it will take effect 30 days from now. What will follow this is a referral to A and F, uh, to approve a bond resolution and the development agreement between the Merck developers and the city and the MRA. That was spelled out in the, excuse me, development agreement that was approved between the city and the Merck developers several years ago. So this is just following up on what that development agreement anticipated when it was approved. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. With that, I will open the public hearing on the resolution and ordinance. Anyone care to comment?
Um, I just wanted, as I was listening, um, to the speaker talk, um, nowhere did I, um, hear, um, consideration, thinking seven generations ahead as far as how hotels or tourism development, um, in Missoula, um, well, we're not thinking about our planet when I think about hotels and things like that. I think about like all the little plastic bottles, you know, for like samples that are put in there, um, for people, all that trash, you know, that's going to be accumulated and stuff. And so I just feel as, um, Missoula that maybe we should be not thinking just economic driver as far as when we take into consideration changing things to more tourism and money. Um, we got 12 years as far as climate change, um, catastrophe, things like that, and I would like for just Missoula to just throw in more language in there as far as, um, thinking more outside the box than economics, um, making money, profits. Um, maybe we can put that land better to use with more sustainable, um, projects, um, other than just hotels. Um, I do, I have read that hotels are going to be a big deal with climate, um, refugees, and so, um, meaning that corporations are just looking also for ways to make money as people start moving, um, away from their homes because of climate catastrophe, whether it's wildfires or hurricanes that destroy homes, flooding, rising of oceans. Um, in any case, um, I would just like, just to put that out there for maybe, um, just to think ahead, seven generations ahead, how will hotels really benefit our planet, um, our children's, and things like that? So, thank you.
Thank you. And if I could ask you to identify yourself one more time for the record.
Um, yes. Letitia Romero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, John Kevin Hunt, I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but I, I grew up in Missoula. I went to Rattlesnake Grade School, Holgate High School, University of Montana. I moved away 39 years ago. The last city council meeting I was at was back over in the old building. I love your new chambers, but, um, this is an issue that we fought very hard, uh, in Oregon, in, uh, Clackamas County. And what I learned during that was that tax increment financing is, is basically just a slush fund. It's, it, it, under the guise of declaring so-called blighted districts, and it robs, it robs services to schools, it robs us of public services, it's a ripoff. And I do not understand what, we, we defeated it back there finally in, 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 uh, in Oregon City. We, the people, uh, people revolted, and we adopt, we changed the city charter. So the bonded indebtedness for Urban Renewal had to be approved, uh, by a public vote. Um, and it, it was, it was a massive landslide. Uh, maybe the people of Missoula will stand up for this too. I don't understand why tax increment financing is being used to assist with capitalist projects for people to, uh, to make profits in this town. When I moved away from here, Missoula was just, just starting to get a little more developed, and now it seems that the city council has adopted this idea that every square inch of area in this town has to be on this trendy thing called infill. You know, there was just a, uh, a health study that was released within the last week. It said that urban areas that don't have and preserve open spaces have much higher incidences of cardiac arrests just from people walking around and from the, the, um, the stress that it causes people. It's very real. It's very real. So just on principle, I'm here to speak in opposition to anything that's going to accommodate this kind of, um, uh, use of, of TIF financing, um, for things other than blight. I don't see any blight, uh, where this is, um, this is going on. And so I, I'm just here to register my opposition and to give you a little heads up that there's probably going to be a groundswell of citizens that are going to, um, figure out what TIF financing is all about. Things are going to change around here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi. Michael Workman, Ward, Ward 1. Um, I'm just curious, mine is more of a question, um, just from experience in this neighborhood in Front Street. Um, I have, uh, numerous friends in that neighborhood. Um, it's a low-income neighborhood, or it's a neighborhood where a lot of like college students, um, preside or live for cheap and are able to access downtown, or people who work downtown. I know multiple people that do. Um, and I'm just concerned about, um, the impact of tourism in that area for housing affordability, and, um, if there are any priorities within, um, the, um, in the Urban Renewal District for Front Street, um, for housing affordability, or if, if this passes, if you will do anything, um, as a council to offset that increased cost of living for those folks with low income in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Looks like there must be two people that don't like TIF. May even be three or four if we look good. I don't think this, I really don't understand what number three is. If I understood you, Mayor, correctly, you can't fund that hotel, the Marriott Hotel, until this is done? And the hotel was approved, and they started building months and months and maybe a couple of years ago? If that is true, then this should be sent back to committee to see what is going on, what happened. Maybe you won't make that same mistake again. I don't think this should be approved. And in particular, I have no idea what this is. Tourism development as a commercial goal. What is a commercial goal? Is that hotel just tourism? There's probably some business people going to stay there. As a commercial goal of the district and to approve a project as an urban renewal project? What is the project? What is the project where you're approving? I think, uh, this is unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
How you doing? Uh, my name's John Powers. Um, I'm a laborer here in Missoula, and I won't take long here. I just, um, while I'm listening to this, I'm wondering, uh, how much consideration has been given to these projects and the wages that they will provide if they go through. Uh, one thing that's becoming kind of a drag to watch happen over and over again is, um, people who live in this community, community not being able to afford any of the things that you live here to do. Um, wages are a real issue. There's no way that wages can be removed from a project like this. And, um, I guess I'm asking a, a question about how much concern has been put into that and pleading for that to be a big part of the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further comments? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council? Mr. Dubarry?
I want to thank, uh, the folks who spoke, and I would like to ask, uh, Ms. Buchanan to speak briefly on the efforts that, uh, council and the MRA made with regard to prevailing wages during the construction of the Mercantile Hotel.
Ms. Buchanan?
Ellen Buchanan. One, one of the conditions that comes with the use of tax increment funds in a project like the Merck is that state prevailing wage rates have to be paid for those activities that are being funded with the public dollars. So that building was deconstructed, um, as opposed to demolished. We salvaged a ton of materials from it that would not have been otherwise, otherwise salvaged had we not had TIF funds available to pay for the difference in the cost of demolition and deconstruction. And all of those people that were involved in that activity were paid state prevailing wage rates. Anybody involved in the public improvements in the right of way will be paid, or have been or are being paid state prevailing wage rates because those are being funded with public dollars. So, um, that's one big advantage of using tax increment financing on some of these projects. Otherwise, those, those wages would have been much different. Um, I don't know if you want me to talk about other aspects, or if that's what you were after. That was primarily what I was after.
Ms. Armstrong?
Ellen, I'm sorry. Could you come back? So I know we've already made some reimbursements to the Mercantile Partners previously. What action will be taken after this change is made to the URD? Anything, are there, do we owe them something still for demo? Is there, does this change enable us to pay them more or less, or just exactly what we have said we're going to pay them?
They have not been reimbursed anything to date. The project has to be completed, and they have to get a certificate of occupancy before they are eligible for reimbursement. So this is reimbursing, reimbursing them, this paves the way to reimburse them if you approve the bond resolution, uh, later on this month, uh, to reimburse them for those activities that were eligible and for the amount that was approved. For instance, just over 3.5 million, I think. But they haven't been paid anything to date.
Ms. Armstrong?
And can you just clarify, since we're revisiting this, exactly what the 3.5 million is for? I know it was for demo, or for the deconstruction and utilities and-
It was primarily utility relocation and improvements in the right of way. It was deconstruction of the building, which was considerably more expensive and more time-consuming than demolition is, and then improvements to the, the sidewalks with the bulbouts and, and street lighting and that sort of thing.
Ms. West?
So work in the public right of way.
So my, so my question is whether or not there are any other specific economic sectors that are called out. Um, and the reason I'm asking is because deconstruction and utility, um, upgrades and public right of way improvements and historic slash facade preservation are things that are already independently, like, things that are supported by MRA funds? And are, so are there any other things like tourism specifically that are called out in the Front Street URD?
Well, there, there are a number of different things that are called out in that Urban Renewal Plan. Uh, tourism development was not one of them. Hotels specifically were not. Parking garages, for instance, were. Class A office buildings, for instance, were. Housing, I believe, is called out in there. Um, so that's the reason that we have to amend the plan, to expand, uh, the, the uses that can be urban renewal projects.
Ms. West?
Follow-up question. So if someone were to decide, um, because I know housing, um, I'm working on a project that has some MRA funds in it, and there's some specific parameter, parameters that make it eligible for that sort of funding. So what about, um, say, the conversion of residential, currently residential properties to VRBOs, which becomes a commercial enterprise? Um, would those sorts of conversions be eligible for future MRA funding?
I, I'm not sure how that would even begin to fit into, uh, any of our programs because typically if you were converting a residential property to be a VRBO, you're probably doing interior renovations, and we don't pay for those sorts of things. So I don't, I don't know what would, what would even trigger that, and I'm not sure how we could control the ultimate conversion to a VRBO any more than city council can with other, other projects in the city.
Mr. Hess?
Thanks. Ms. Buchanan, um, as you well know, um, the city's been working on, um, a suite of affordable housing, uh, policies over the last year, and, and we will likely be seeing those in the coming weeks and months.
Yep, been to a lot of meetings.
And, um, and I know you've been really involved in that, and we've also been, um, really at the forefront of, um, being a, a very early city to have a climate action plan, um, and, and having a number of sustainability objectives, including our Zero Waste Plan. Can you talk about how MRA, um, through its efforts, advances, um, both of those efforts, uh, housing affordability and sustainability?
Well, historically, MRA has supported any number of, of affordable housing projects, and typically those are permanent, permanently affordable housing units. Um, everything from Clark Fort Commons, which is a land trust project that was done behind Missoula water on the riverfront, to Sweetgrass Commons, which is on the western edge of the Old Sawmill District, uh, to Equinox and Solstice. I mean, we, we've done a number of different things in terms of providing assistance for demolition. We're helping with, uh, the project that North Missoula CDC is currently working on on Front Street for, once again, deconstruction and, and, and site demolition. Uh, in the case of Sweetgrass Commons, we were able to write down the cost of that land so that it could be, all of those units can be permanently affordable. Um, so, so, I mean, we're, we're constantly looking for projects and trying to assist with projects with real dollars to help bring affordability to these projects in, in a permanent way. So I-
Thanks. Can you address, um, uh, the sustainability goals as well? Can you address the sustainability goals as well, and how, how MRA projects can help further those?
Well, one of the things that we're able to do, because our money is not an entitlement to any of these projects, we can require a higher standard, if you will. And one of the things that we've made a criteria in our facade improvement programs in districts two and three is, is actually energy efficiency measures and more sustainable building materials and that sort of thing. That, that is always a consideration when we're looking at these, these projects, is going to more efficient windows and doors and more efficient insulation and exterior treatment. You know, I, I, I hope there'll be some legislation in this coming session, the legislature that will even further enhance our ability to invest in renewable energy. I would love it if we could provide solar for, for buildings, but right now, that's not something that's allowed in state law, as far as we can tell.
Further questions? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. This question is not meant to be facetious at all, and maybe you did already address it, and I'm just still not getting a clear grasp of it, I guess. So if we have to change this and amend it before we can pay the money that we promised the Merck, why was this not changed before we promised the money to the Merck? I'm just a little bit confused on that, because I feel as though we're kind of more or less being held hostage, because if we vote no, then we're kind of pulling back on a promise that we gave them. Why, why did we not plan in advance for this? I guess my only question.
The developers of the Merck understand completely that, that approval of that bond issue rests with the city council. The MRA board has approved a certain amount for eligible expenses. There are no guarantees that that money will change hands until and unless city council acts, and, and the developers are fully aware of that. And the development agreement that memorializes all of that will come to you at the same time as the bond resolution. And that's no different than any other project that we do.
Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, and thank you for that, that clarification. I definitely feel better about my vote now. And next, my question was, so last time you were before us, you mentioned a little bit about this language kind of opening, opening the door for, you mentioned Max Wave or a conference center. Could you elaborate a little bit more on those, those projects that you talked about?
Neither of those projects are in this urban renewal district. The amendment to this plan has no impact on Max Wave or on the hotel conference center at Riverfront Triangle.
So I, I was just a little bit confused as to why you mentioned those two projects when you were discussing this particular language last time, I guess is why I brought it up, because...
Probably in the context of tourism development. Both of those are tourist attractants, just as is the skate park in Brennan's Wave. Having a hotel with a full conference center that can, can house large conferences opens up possibilities that Missoula can't attract right now. It wasn't specific to this particular amendment, but it's, you know, it speaks to the, the impact of the industry, and one of our biggest industries in, in Missoula right now is tourism.
Thank you for clarifying.
Ms. Harp, question?
One of Mr. Ramos's comments made me, got me to thinking. If, if the city council basically walked back from the promise that the MRA was making with the development team for the Mercantile, what are the odds that future development would happen if they thought it was all contingent upon the council vote?
I think it would certainly have a dampening effect. I, I think one thing that's unique about this project is that there was a previous development agreement that was entered into, I think in 2016, between these developers and the city council. Did not involve the MRA, that memorializes pretty much what we're doing now. I don't think it speaks necessarily to amendment of the urban renewal plan, but it does talk about what happens if there is TIF financing made available to this project, and is very clear on the fact that if, if it requires bonding, which we've all known that would have to require bonding just because of the capacity in that particular district, that's a city council decision. And that and the development agreement, the second development agreement, which is much more extensive than the 2016 one, come back to council for approval. If, if council were to walk back from this, I, I, I think it would have a, a major impact on a lot of decisions about investing in, in Missoula.
Further questions? Seeing none. Ms. Harp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second and final reading, to adopt or deny or an ordinance amending the Front Street Urban Renewal Plan for the Front Street Urban Renewal District, to provide for tourism development as a commercial goal of the district, and to approve a project as urban renewal project.
And that motion is in order? Discussion on the motion. Mr. Von Lausberg?
Just a point of order. The motion should be, I, I believe the intent was to adopt. You read adopt or deny, just to be clear.
Thank you.
I, I'm supportive of this very straightforward cleanup. Thanks.
Ms. Shelley?
I'm in support of the motion. Three years ago, we spent our entire summer as city council, hearing the Merck hearings, and a big part of the discussion was the fact that retail has changed in the last 10 years. Amazon is now our retail king in America, and brick and mortar stores don't exist nearly to the extent, especially the big, the big department stores. So Macy's left right around the time, I think, 2011, 2012, and there was no interest in any department store anchor coming back into Missoula, into our downtown. So we discussed the fact quite a bit that the environment has changed, and in the last 10 years since this urban renewal district plan was created, tourism has grown immensely in Missoula. So I think, I see this as just housekeeping, reflecting the reality that nowadays, we don't have big department stores. But if people are coming into Missoula and staying in hotels downtown, they are eating in the restaurants and going to what boutique stores remain. So that's something that we just have to reflect in the reality of our legislation here.
Mr. DeBary?
I just want to say that I appreciate the comments specifically of Mr. Powers and Ms. Romero, and hopefully you got a sense of the efforts that city council is making to the extent that we can to address issues around wages and sustainability. It's not a perfect world, but we, whatever opportunities we have, we like to take them in order to advance the issues of sustainability. And Ms. Jones didn't mention this, but there, maybe she would take a few seconds, or Ms. Harp, to talk about the apprentice program that we've been working on. And this is a concern that we have, to make sure that folks in this community have an opportunity to get work here, and when they do get work, that they are paid a living wage. So I just want folks to understand that this is something that is a concern to council, specifically wages and sustainability.
Further discussion? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say, every time we, we discuss TIF, I'm, I'm just a little bit confused about it. I mean, let's face the facts, I'm, I'm the Republican up here, and I'm the one that's opposing giving money to private corporations, and I'm the one that's opposing giving money to these private multinational, huge corporations that are very, very wealthy. And I don't understand the, the drive by the council to promote tourism. Tourism is supposed to be a naturally forming industry that is, is created and driven by the market and the beauty. It's not supposed to be driven by the government. And I, I appreciate the fact that people want to promote living wage jobs during construction. Those are temporary jobs, but in the long run, the tourism industry, those are service jobs. They do not pay a living wage. Why are we focused on promoting service jobs, like, like was mentioned, hotels, restaurants, boutiques? All those folks, you'd be hard pressed to find anybody that makes over 10 bucks an hour working at one of those jobs. Why are we putting so much money into places like the mall, or hotels, or various other projects with TIF dollars into jobs that promote tourism, which tourism, it's great for the rich people to come to Missoula and visit and live here, or visit us and don't actually have to live here, but for the people that work at those jobs, yes, we're creating jobs, but they're not living wage jobs. I'd be hard pressed to find anybody that could afford to live on eight bucks an hour in today's day and age, especially in Missoula with the housing crisis the way it is. And it's, we're not going to be able to tax ourselves in prosperity. It's just not going to happen. It's like standing in a bucket and trying to pick yourself up by the handle. That's what trying to tax yourself in prosperity is. And I really just don't understand the mindset, and I don't understand why I'm typically the only person that votes no on a lot of these projects. And to Ms. Buchanan's point, she said that it would send a clear message to the developer, and in her opinion, wouldn't be a good message. In my opinion, it would be a great message. It would be, if you can't afford to do this without the help of the taxpayers, don't do the project, okay? You're on your own. This is the private sector, we're not your babysitters. If you can make money, do it, but don't come to us for a handout. They knew the risks. They knew that this might not get approved by, by the city council. So in my opinion, we should vote this down tonight, and I'm going to be voting no on it.
Further discussion? Mr. Von Lausberg?
Yeah, I didn't understand almost any of that. I'll just get back to the facts. Seems like the whole country has departed from living in a world based on facts. This is a private, since we're talking about the Merck specifically, we're talking about a private development on a private piece of property. And this is something that was going to happen, and by investing TIF money, we get some things for the public good of the community that we otherwise would not have received as a part of that activity. It's not a handout to the developer. It's not a closing of the loop to make the project suddenly pencil out. The council, after a ton of deliberation, decided that we wanted the building deconstructed rather than demolished. There's a cost that comes with that, and the community has a value around seeing that we contribute to applying that sort of requirement on a development that otherwise would not have required it. We made a determination that we wanted to save a portion of the historic structure. It was the most recent portion of the historic structure that existed and was in the best condition, and that was the pharmacy. That would not have happened by just, and wasn't required to happen with the developer doing it, but the council and the community, after deliberation and disagreement, which is natural to these sorts of processes, came around in a democratic way to saying, we're going to protect, we, we want the developer, we're requiring, not just wanting, we require the developer to protect this portion, and because we're making that requirement, we're going to contribute funds to make that thing that otherwise would not have happened, happen because we see that it's in the interests of the community. This is the but for proposition when you hear people talk about TIF fund. But for this money, this would not have happened. Utilities, I mean, it's not a sexy sort of thing, but we wanted utilities undergrounded in the right of way. There's a, there's a benefit to that. There's an aesthetic benefit, there's an operational benefit, exposure to elements and such. Would not have been required, but with this project happening, we can make that happen via this, this increment financing, and then there's some work in the public right of way. These are things that would not have been required, that we deem in the public good. Not everyone agrees with them. It's very clear that you don't. That's fine. But the community, by and large, wants to see these sorts of things, and so that's the kind of money we, we bring to it. So when we talk about handouts to developers or something, as if they suddenly make the pencil, that the project just would have happened, and we're just tacking on money because we just want to throw some money into it, that's baloney. We get these other benefits for the community as a result of these things, and I have no problem supporting those.
Ms. Armstrong?
I would encourage Mr. Ramos to look at it a different way. When you build a house and you have to put a sidewalk out front, you want the city to come in and help you with that sidewalk with a subsidy. We agreed to reimburse them for some items that they were going to have to pay for wholeheartedly, but benefited us, initially benefited them, and so they're asking for us to partner on those things. And I would also encourage you to understand competition in the marketplace. One hotel can pay whatever wages it wants because it has no competition for talent. Two hotels now have to pay higher wages because they're competing for the same talent. It's the same thing with the tech companies coming in. The more that they're competing for the same talent, the same amount of people live here, more companies coming in will have to pay higher wages to get the talent that they want. We need to continue to encourage businesses to come in and, and set up shop here, and that will do things like pay higher wages across the board because they're competing for the same number of people. So you might just take a look at it that way.
Ms. West?
So I'm not going to support this mostly, not because I don't think that this project, which is Merck-specific, shouldn't be supported, but it seems to me that the Front Street U R D plan already covers deconstruction and utility upgrades and historic preservation and public art displays, all of which are encapsulated within this one, commercial development. And I don't, while parking is specifically called out as a need in the Front Street U R D, there don't seem to be, and housing, residential housing is, and of ground level commercial development with housing above it. Other than that, it's a fairly general document, and I feel that commercial development includes tourism, especially in our current economy. I don't think that it is something that needs to be called out as a specific goal that stands separate from general commercial development.
Further discussion? Seeing none. We have had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Sorry if I couldn't interrupt. I, I wanted to just follow up on what Dr. DeBary asked about the apprenticeship requirement, and just to talk to the public a little bit about something that Gwen Jones and I have been working on behind the scenes in terms of legislation.
I'll, I'll have you hold that for council comments.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay. All right. We have had debate and a public hearing, and we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, this is, I'm trying to see if it's both a resolution and an ordinance. It's just the ordinance at this point. We did the resolution of intention already. So this is on the ordinance. I think we start roll this round with HARP. HARP votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes no. Von Lausberg. Von Lausberg votes yes. West. West votes no. Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares. Kares votes yes. And DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Any of you like to change your vote? There's 10 ayes, 2 nays.
And the motion is approved. Our fourth and final public hearing this evening is on the Parks and Recreation Master Fee Schedule for 2019, and our staff report this evening comes from Ms. Kinsey.
Shirley Kinsey, Parks and Recreation.
Uh-oh. contracts, permits, and programs for 2019. We go through this process each year, required by state law, a public hearing for fees, and essentially, I follow the same recipe every year. I send out a, a mass email to all the users that I have identified, and in that user group memo, I propose changes per what we come up with for the master fees in terms of our cost analysis for the different programs and facilities, looking at the budget. Then we take it to the Parks and Recreation Board. It's reviewed by the Missoula County Board for the Fort Missoula. This year, the Missoula County Commissioners actually were able to review the fees at Fort Missoula, and we presented some... able to review the fees at Fort Missoula, and we presented some information to them. My mouth is very dry, sorry. And then, the Park and Conservation Committee review last a couple of weeks ago, and then this public hearing. So, from the review we did at the Park and Conservation, it was obvious that we needed to clarify some things on the Park Enterprise Fund because there's a lot of items that are changing in terms of percentages. And so, what the Park Enterprise Fund is, is it's developed by the Parks and, it was developed by the Parks and Recreation, improved by administration and the city council. And it serves as a tool to help meet some of the needs of special interest groups, provides funding for projects that would not generally score well in the CIP process, or funding for emergency repairs that would negatively impact the operational budget. Past enterprise funds have been used for... So, past enterprise funds have been used to resurface tennis courts, improve softball, baseball, soccer, volleyball, and the ropes course facilities. In addition, the ropes course enterprise fund supports the annual inspection and the required improvements identified during that inspection. Also, the funds are collected by designating a percentage of the total of the rental fee. So, the user groups are helping to fund the improvements to their facilities, and they have, say, in what we use the money for. So... Oh, thank you, my angel.
Thank you, Ms. Kares.
That was painful. So, moving on to the proposed changes, Section 1.1, softball diamonds at the McCormick Fields, the hourly rate increase from 13 to 18, tournament all-day increase 130 to 190, and tournament half-day 65 to 95. The enterprise fund increase will go from 30 to 40. There's quite a few identified infrastructure improvements that need to happen at McCormick in order for us to keep using it for league and tournament games. We just have to do it. So, at Fort Missoula, for the non-league rate, the hourly increase will go from 15 to 18 with no lights, 25 to 28 with lights. And the enterprise fund will decrease from 30% to 10% for each hourly rate. When we went through the cost analysis, we were trying to meet a certain percentage of cost recovery of direct and readily identifiable indirect costs. And we felt with a new facility, we could start inching up the enterprise fund as we went along. But right now, it was not imperative, and we could help keep the fees a little bit lower by decreasing the enterprise. For the league rates, at Fort Missoula, fields 1 through 5 will go from 125 to 140 a night, and that includes the lights and the prep on the field. The fields 6 and 7 are coming online this year, and will increase the fees from 84 a night to 86 a night. Those fields have no lights. And again, the enterprise funds will decrease from 30 to 10 per rental hour, percentage per rental hour. We don't plan to change any of the rates for the tournaments. We haven't really had a tournament season yet, and we feel that we can, we can realize our business plan out there, offsetting the cost of the fields with the concessions for the tournament. So, the tournament rates won't change. For Section 1.3, the multi-use fields, Playfair East and West, their rectangle fields at Playfair Park, will increase from 15 to 16 an hour, 150 to 160 per day. Playfair South, 1 and 2, from 1075 to 1175, and 10750 to 11750 per day. The enterprise fund increase will increase from 25 to 40% per each hour of rental dedicated for field improvement. Here, again, we have some major renovations to do at Playfair, and we're hoping to start building a fund to see some of those projects through. Fort Missoula fields, we plan to decrease the enterprise fund from 25 to 10% for each rental hour for the fees. Again, they're, it's a new facility, and we're going to plan on inching that back up as the facilities age. The multi-use fields in neighborhood parks, we've added Silver Park as a reservable space for youth sports to come out and play in the flat space, essentially. So, it's not a, the question was asked if it was a lined facility, and no, it's just a practice space at Silver Park. Section 1.7, the horseshoe pits, croquet area, and bocce ball courts at Fort Missoula, the horseshoe pits will decrease $10 an hour to $2 an hour, or $10 per day. Croquet area, $25 to $10 per hour, or $100 per day. And the bocce ball courts decrease from $25 per hour to $2 per hour, or $10 per day. We, after the facilities were built, we passed the fees before the facilities were built, and after they were built, taking a good look at them, they seemed more in line with our older horseshoe pits in terms of commanding a revenue. The Section 1.12 is the Moon Randolph Homestead fees. It, they, the caretakers wanted to add a ceremony fee, which is essentially half the price of the normal wedding fee for basically a stand-up ceremony, less than five hours, and it includes setup and takedown. And they'll require a $300 deposit. Hmm, okay. Currents Aquatics Facility Rental, the Headwaters Community Room increased from 22 to 24 for the first hour, and 17 to 19 for each additional hour. The nonprofit rate will increase from 17 to 19 for the first hour, $1150 to $14 for each additional hour. The Section 1.14, Aquatics Facility Rentals, Splash Facility Rentals, without the 50-meter, will increase from 339 to 375 for the hour and a half rental. The facility rental with the 50-meter will increase from 508 to 550. And the swim team rental rates will increase from 94 an hour, or 1175 per lane per hour, to 96 per hour, or $12 per lane per hour. Section 1.16, the Commons Greens and Ponderosa Meeting Room and Plaza, we added fees for the Ponderosa Meeting Room, and they are similar to the meeting room at Headwaters. The $24 for the first hour, $19 for each additional hour, and the nonprofit discount is 19 for the first hour and 14 for each additional hour, with $100 deposit. 25% will go into a Park Enterprise Fund to, for maintenance and equipment replacement. So, moving on to the Splash and Currents, these are kind of highlights of what I reviewed at the Conservation Committee. So, on average, we serve about 179,000 people each year at Currents and Splash. We endeavor to provide a safe, accessible place to play in the water. While the rivers and the lakes are beautiful here in Montana, they're not accessible to everyone. Our professional lifeguards are there to ensure safe play while at these facilities. The city's aquatics facilities, by design, provide a recreational experience for everyone in our community, regardless of socioeconomic age or ability. They're truly multi-generational facilities. They allow people of all ages to come together and socialize and play. And our facilities are now 13 years old. They were built in 2005, and aging facilities always require more TLC than new ones. Section 1.3, Aquatics Daily Fees, Seasons and Annual Passes, we're asking that the daily fees be increased 50 cents. So, adult would increase from 675 to 7 and 1/4, and with the city discount, that would be a $6 entry fee. Students 13 to 17, $5 to 550, or with the city discount, $450 per person. Youth, $450 to 5, 6 and under, $350 to 4, and seniors, 5 to 550. We'll adjust all the punch cards per the formula to reflect the increases. But just to give you an idea about the cost out on the annual passes and the punch cards, the annual passes are based on 104 visits to both facilities, and it takes 55% off of the daily fee. Or a 30 punch card pass discounts 30% off the daily fee. So, we've got some pretty good deals. We also have a pretty healthy scholarship program, and we plan to increase the aquatic scholarship from 100 to 130 to help offset that 50 cent increase. We're also working with the Health Department and the Affordable Housing to determine the best approach to identify people who are just above the poverty line. They're not on any public assistance, but they could use some help as well. We'd like to provide a sliding scale to assist them with access to the aquatics facilities and the recreation programs. I have this up here because I want to plug the license plate. We get quite a bit of funding off of the license plate every year. So, if you don't have your Zoo City license plate... And then, finally, a 4.2 short-term event concession fee will increase 50 cents from $31.50 to $32 a day, or 10-plus, if you buy 10 permits at one time, they're $26.50 to $27.50. And that's all the changes this year.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsey. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this proposed fee schedule? All right. Seeing none, are there questions? I'll close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Jones. And please note for the record that Ms. Anderson is here after having made a fast trek from Helena.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of questions, Shirley, and I wanted to preface it by saying that years ago, when I had kids doing lacrosse, I was the parent tasked with calling up Shirley to get rentals of fields, and all I had was a number and the name Shirley. And she was the nicest person and very knowledgeable, and this was long before Fort Missoula, when we had more fields, so there was great demand, and she was just great working through things. And so, we couldn't ask for a better face in terms of interacting with the public, and I really appreciate that. And now I know you. It's really exciting. But I had a couple of questions. I want to say that the aquatics facilities were opened up around 2005. I wasn't involved in city government then, so I wasn't paying quite as close attention. But I'm wondering if we, if you, or I know Donna is here also, kind of have a frame of reference for when those facilities were opened up. I know that we had a lot of research put into it in terms of extrapolating forward where we would eventually be with fees, and if we could have that frame of reference, because we did have a fee increase last year, we've got this proposed for this year. But what in terms of our frame of reference for, historically, where we anticipated we'd be now? Is that question clear?
Yes. And it's a little difficult to answer. The fees from the pro forma started out a little bit higher, and the city council chose to have the fees start lower. So, we actually have increased them slowly over the years. And unfortunately, this is the, one of the first years that we have not finished a budget year in the black. So, it stemmed back from when we didn't increase fees when the Affordable, the Living Wage was passed. And then, all the wages increased, the minimum wage increased, and we want to pay our people more. So, that's not, but it's a balancing act.
And my understanding is also post-recession, there were a couple of years there where city council, as a policy decision, chose to keep fees down or not increase them because of what was happening in our economy at the time. Is that right?
Correct. And they chose to add more subsidy to the budget.
Thanks. And then, just on a separate topic, every year in Montana, kids and some adults die by drowning in irrigation ditches and in rivers, and some in lakes. And I think a high priority with these aquatics facilities is getting kids especially to learn how to swim in a safe environment that isn't frigid water, but that, where they develop those skills. With my kids personally, it was not only learning how to swim, but learning how to swim well enough so that if somebody pushes them off a dock into the cold Flathead Lake, they can swim well enough to get up and get out. And that takes a lot of time in the water to get to that point. So, can you just tell us a little bit in terms of our lifeguards at these facilities, at Splash, at Currents, how many saves they tend to have on average per year? Because I think that's really crucial.
So, let me start with the swim lessons, because that's, we teach about, right around 1,000 kids to swim each year. And it's so important to make sure that every kid knows how to swim. In terms of save, in terms of saves, I, a lot of what the lifeguards do is prevention. And so, when, what we might consider a save, they just jump in and get someone because they look like they're distressed, whether they're distressed or not. But very actual, actual life-saving saves are very few because most of it is preventative. They're watching, they're diligent, they're doing their scans, and if they see something happening, they act.
Further questions? I have Ms. Merritt and Ms. Armstrong. I don't have Ms. Merritt. I have Ms. Armstrong.
So, we're raising fees, which is great because it's a per-use thing, and people get to choose whether or not they use them instead of raising taxes across the board. Will this get us anywhere close to our maintenance backlog, or should we really be raising fees quite a bit more? That might be a question for Donna. I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah. It's kind of hard to say, because we had a real cold summer. Splash Montana is our workhorse for revenue, and it's so weather-dependent. We saw one season of smoke and then one season of cold. So, we can't, haven't been able to judge at this point. So, we need a bunch of 100-degree days at Splash.
And most of this is about cost recovery rather than trying to provide for maintenance and capital? Mr. Von Laasberg?
Thanks. Two quick, down-in-the-weeds questions, and I know the answer to at least one of these, but I think it's beneficial for the public. So, you showed the rates, the city card discount. Can you just quickly explain what does someone do to get a city card? The city card?
Yeah. Just, the city card is a discount program. You just bring a piece of mail that has your address on it to Currents, and you can get your city card for $1.
Yeah. I've done that. It's helpful. And the other one is, I know we, I'm assuming we still have it, but I didn't see it up on the list. I believe it was a year or two ago, we added a fee for non-swimmers who were like accompanying, because that was one of the things that, in the research, and I really appreciate what you guys do, and sort of looking back each year at, you know, are we serving the right groups, and could we, what could we do? And I remember we added, I think, like an adult companion or observer. That still exists, right?
Correct. So, someone who's not swimming, accessing the facility for Currents pays the same rate that we passed a few years ago.
So, it hasn't changed, which is why it's not part of up here, because these are only where there are changes.
Right. And then we do have a companion program where someone who needs assistance can bring that person, and we let them in at no cost.
Thanks.
Mr. Hess and Mr. DiBari and everybody.
A lot to digest, so I apologize if I missed it. But can you talk about the income, you know, if we have a low-income person who can't pay the fee, how we treat that? I recall having a subsidy program or a scholarship-type program. Can you just refresh me on that?
Yeah. The scholarship program is administered through the front desk. Most of the time, people just come in and show either a WIC card or whatever assistance they have, and we provide them a scholarship. They can get, they will be able to get $130 for aquatics pass, pass or punch cards. And there's $130 for city residents for recreation programming, so.
Ms. DiBari?
On a couple of the slides, you had changes in percentage around what you've called an enterprise fund. And while I think most of us on council understand what that point is, it's maybe not very clear to the general public. Can you just explain for their benefit what is going on when you're talking about the change in percent and what your, what in real terms that enterprise fund is and how it's used by Parks and Rec?
Sure. Should I buzz back to the slide? Yeah. So, the enterprise fund is essentially the percentage of the rental fee that goes into the enterprise fund itself, and we track it by facility. So, the rectangle fields have an enterprise fund. The diamond fields have an enterprise fund at the fort. McCormick has its own, Playfair. So, and then those enterprise funds are used for projects that someone, a special interest group, user group, could come forward and say, "We would really like to see," for example, the MSA wanted the fields at McCormick, the fences raised between the fields, because there was, they were getting a lot of overthrows from field to field. So, we used, they requested we use enterprise fund, and we used enterprise fund to increase the height of the field separating, or the fence separating the fields. So, it's essentially for improvements or safety or, yeah.
I have Ms. Anderson.
Thanks so much for coming and presenting this. And I know that it's a very delicate balancing act between raising fees, but wanting to make sure that everyone in our community can come and enjoy these amazing resources. I would, you didn't really talk about it in this presentation, but I think it'd be, if you could just quickly say a couple of words about the increase in revenue from swim teams and the fact that we see that as a source of revenue, that we want to continue to, I guess, cultivate or acquire, I don't know what the right word is, but go after, because I think it shows that, you know, you're not just depending upon, you know, Sally and her two kids coming and paying, but there are other sources of revenue that you are actively seeking out and that is helping offset some of this stuff.
I can assure you that we have squeezed that rock as, you know, from Dollar Day Sales to rental fees, parties, cabana rentals. We've looked at a whole host of ways to generate revenue to keep that gate cost down. So, the swim team, one of our, one of our largest costs at Splash Montana is the 50-meter pool. It's a large body of water that requires heat and a lot of chemicals. So, the nice thing about swim team rental is that they're going to rent that facility and swim in that facility regardless of the weather, which there's, there are some times that I have to take my hat off to those kids, because I certainly wouldn't be in the water. So, but we try as, and we're always open to suggestions, too. If you see a gap somewhere, that we can produce a little bit more revenue to keep those gates low.
Further questions? Ms. Hart?
I'm going to pose this question to Donna Gockler. Since you came down, I may as well ask you at least one question. So, I guess kind of what I, what we're facing tonight is increasing fees to the general public for admission for the various different programs that they access versus increasing from the, or taking a larger chunk from the general fund. And I think that's something that is, is something that we have to be cognizant of, for sure. And I think, as Gwen had mentioned earlier, this is the first increase in a number of years. And some fees go up one year, and then six years later, the next cycle comes around for another program. But I'm really concerned about how things have gone down in Great Falls, where they've had to close their nanatorium, and for a host of reasons. And I was wondering if you could perhaps address what we need to do going forward to make sure that that does not happen in Missoula.
Donna Gockler, Director of Parks and Recreation. Managing public facilities and maintaining low, reasonable, appropriate taxes, especially when you realize pretty much solely on property taxes outside of things like program fees, is a huge challenge, because one of the easiest ways to balance a budget on an annual basis is to defer long-range maintenance. Great Falls did have to close its facilities because of too long of deferred maintenance. It is not uncommon, though, for public facilities to come to a time where that facility has aged out and needs replacement. And that is literally, for example, what happened with the 50-meter pool at McCormick and Spartan Swimming Pool, is they had essentially aged out. One of them was failing, and the other, I think, was about 40 years old. And the best way, I think, to prevent that would ideally, we all have a depreciation account. But I don't think it's unlike our homes. We don't necessarily plan to replace them, other than the fact that we own value in them. And in the public, that value comes in a lot of ways. There's certainly infrastructure value. We can capitalize those costs. We can bond against them. But the real value is from people using them and the way it changes community. So, long story, at some point, you know, 50 to 60, 70 years from now, we may be in the same situation, or it may happen sooner with the 50-meter pool, the style of construction, call it, was a 25-year facility. And we're about 10 years into that facility. And so, we do our best to make sure we recover daily costs, keep you informed as council members that we do have aging infrastructure, and that if we can find alternative ways to fund that, we often look at grants, different kinds of taxation is obviously an option, or at times, we end up closing facilities. What we have found, in my experience at least, being in Missoula since 1991, is when we've presented the public with a problem and given them opportunity to react before the facility fails, that they've been responsive and progressive about that action. And that's truly what happened with Currents and Splash, is folks said, "Look, we don't want to lose the McCormick 50-meter. We don't want to lose the Spartan pool. Let's do something that speaks to the people who live here." And they were very proactive about that with the general obligation bond issue in the early 2000s.
Further questions?
Thank you for that history lesson.
Thank you, Ms. Gockler. Seeing none, Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution establishing city of Missoula Parks and Recreation Fee and Permit Schedules for Parks and Recreation Programs, Facilities, and Concessionaires for 2019. And I'd like to speak to that.
Ms. Jones?
Thanks for all of the time spent educating us on this issue and bringing us up to speed. Making sure that we have the right rates in place for our, all of our facilities is a big job that has to be done every year, and I can't imagine all the work that goes into it, Shirley and Donna. But I just wanted to speak specifically, I think the Fort Missoula and McCormick Parks and McCormick Fields, all of those situations are really set up with great, with rates that work and with long-term maintenance built in, and it's a good situation. Aquatics is a kind of a different beast, and that's what we spend a lot of our time talking about, is trying to find that sweet spot, that balance of getting as many users in as possible, but keeping the rates as low as possible, yet making it as self-sustainable as possible. So, it's a hard balance to strike. And the issue brought up by Ms. Harp, the long-term maintenance issue, is something that we as council are going to have to deal with in the near future, hopefully this summer or coming up. But for right now, this is just to make the budget work and close that gap. And I think having, I'm very comfortable raising these rates, and I'd like to see next year where we're at in terms of attendance, factoring in our X-factors of weather and smoke and temperatures. It's a bit like reading tea leaves, but I think as we get more information in each year, we can figure out the right ratio and where we want to go with this. So, I'm in favor of this, and I hope council supports it tonight.
Further discussion? Ms. Merritt?
Thanks for all the information and Ms. Jones for putting this out there. I do find it unfortunate that we have to raise rates, but I do understand that that's part of it. And getting money for these facilities from the users who are using them does offset our need to raise taxes in general. So, that, in that aspect, I will be supporting the motion. I do, you know, have known so many families with young children who don't have a lot of money, and, you know, Currents is just one of the greatest places when you have a couple of toddlers to go for a safe place, and being able to continue to have young families be able to afford that, I think is really important. But the community did speak in paying for these, the aquatics, Currents and Splash under a general obligation bond, and so they, I know that our community supports this. So, I just wanted to get that on the record. Thanks, everyone.
Further discussion? Ms. West?
I think Shirley has mentioned a few times that one of the large impacts of our, the raising the minimum wage was obviously felt by the Parks Department and these programs. And I think I just want to point that out and highlight what a heavy lift it was for that part of our city, and also that their rates weren't raised in a reactionary way at the time to cover it, and that it's been slowly assessed and raised over time. And of course, it's also coupled with some unfortunate years of smoke and cold weather. But I do think that it's really important that we compensate our employees at a reasonable level, and I wish, I'm sure, that some of them could earn more, because I'm sure they do great jobs. But I do think that this is reasonable and that that minimum wage requirement was a super-important thing to do as a city and to just be a good leader in what a basic minimum wage should be in our community.
Further discussion? Ms. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I've been a little conflicted on this. Initially, I was inclined to vote no, like I did last year, just based, I know it's hard for my fellow council members to understand unless they kind of have a better view of my view of taxation, but I still view it as a double tax, in some cases, a triple tax in some ways. And unfortunately, I am going to support it, just because I do appreciate the fact that my fellow council members have come around to the idea of user-based fees, and they are supportive of it on this issue. And I just want to say one thing before I close, that my feelings are a little bit hurt tonight. So, during the budget talks, when I wanted to cut the $200,000 from the Splash Montana, which would have raised fees according to those numbers about $1.10, I was all but accused of wanting children to drown and hating the poor. But I guess tonight, that's a little bit different, because there's a PowerPoint presentation. But just wanted to bring that to light, and maybe next year, I will bring a PowerPoint presentation. But I will be supporting the motion.
Further discussion? Ms. Von Laasberg?
Thanks. Not doing that during the budget thing had nothing to do with the PowerPoint presentation or not a PowerPoint presentation. That's absurd. I want to compliment and highlight some of those statistics. 180,000 people visiting, almost 180,000 people visiting the facilities in a community this size is fantastic. A few years ago, we added the business manager position within Parks, and I want to recognize the good work that Ryan Applegate in that position has done. He was here talking a lot with a lot of charts and data, tracking expenses, and I get poked fun of for using the expression about wanting to know who's losing sleep over things at night. And I know that Ryan and others in the Parks Department, but I know that Ryan loses sleep at night trying to assess things like these fees and, you know, that balancing act that other people have spoken to of wanting to keep fees low and promote the greatest access, and at the same time, being responsible. It's not like, it's not unlike what we do frankly, relative to a water utility, when we're talking about rates and the needs of the system. And it's a tough thing to do. I appreciate Shirley, all of the outreach that you do to all the user groups. I think that's a really vital thing to do. I didn't get any constituent comments at all about these schedules, and I think in part, that's due to the good work that, of preemptive sort of outreach that gets, that gets done. And I appreciate the answers to some of the questions. I think it's important to know that there are some of these other fee classifications, if you will. I don't want people to think that because they saw that in this presentation, that those were the only fee levels. There are those ones, as you mentioned, for folks who come like as an observer or a companion or something like that. So, I think we bend over backwards, as we should, to do things like the scholarship program and come up with these different classifications of fees to manage that line of promoting the greatest access, keeping things as reasonable as possible, and at the same time, being good fiduciary stewards of the financial responsibilities that we have. None of what is proposed stands out to me as egregious, and I'm happy to support the overall package.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you so much, Council President Von Laasberg, for your words. And you took so much of what I said, but as someone who
so much of what I said, but as someone who vehemently opposed any cuts to Parks and Recs and especially aquatics during the budget cycle, I think that what some of us might fail to realize is that is, you know, the steady Eddie line item, and as they have highlighted here, it is so much dependent upon weather and smoke and things outside of our control, and for us to zero out any contribution to aquatics or Parks and Recreation and put it solely on, you know, whether or not we, you know, win the lottery of 100-day summer with no smoke is unreasonable, and the fees would be more, increased more than just taking simple mathematics. It would be to the point where single mothers, who a lot of us say we're here to support, would be priced out of being able to enjoy these facilities, and I just think that it's just, it's not that simple, and you just can't zero it out that way, and it is a balancing act that, as President Von Laasberg said, that a lot of time and energy is trying, is spent trying to figure out what is the best fee schedule, knowing as well as that we have to put some skin in the game because this is an asset and a public good, and that is what the city is in the business of doing. So just want that on the record, and I, pretty PowerPoints, flowers, and balloons next budget cycle will not change my opinion on this. So I will be supporting this fee increase. I think it's reasonable, measured, and I think that it is hard to quantify the amazing job and asset and value the Parks and Recreation Department brings to the city. For those of us who came to those committee meetings earlier in December, we were very impressed and continue to be so, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
And I'll just remind the body, this is a simple fee adjustment. We do this year in and year out mostly. I might ratchet us back to business and see if we can get this done tonight. Ms. Armstrong?
I'm not going to talk about PowerPoints. I wholeheartedly support this. I, the only thing I was going to ask, I know that the Parks Department has probably exhausted every single possibility on funding, but I was a Division I swimmer, been around pools for a very long time, and I know how expensive they are. If there's any possibility of doing a sponsorship or partnership with MCPS and having them put some skin in the game, because I'm, you're probably coming up on a pretty big renovation soon, probably in the next five years of that pool, and if there's any way to partner with the university or the schools to maybe use some of their bond funds, I think that's worth looking into.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the master fee schedule for the Parks and Recreation Department Resolution, Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Basara. Basara votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. Debary. Debary votes yes. And Harp. Harp votes yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? It's 12 eyes.
And the schedule is approved. We are fresh out of public hearings. I'll pass on communications from the mayor. We'll begin general comments from council members with Ms. Armstrong. Mr. Debary?
Just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to briefly touch on the registered apprentice topic, and I know that Ms. Harp will also, or clean up whatever I don't catch. Without going into great detail on it, Ms. Harp and I have been working on some legislation regarding registered apprentice, having registered apprentice requirement attached to public works projects from the City of Missoula. It is definitely a work in progress, and we continue working on it and researching it, but really the overriding issue that it's based on is workforce development and the trades, not only across America but in Montana and in Missoula, are not getting enough people going into them, and frankly, there are good-paying jobs that can have good benefits, good retirement, and you can make a good living at it. And for numerous reasons, far too many to go into tonight, it is not at the top of people's list in terms of a career. So that's an issue that affects affordable housing, it affects being able to earn a good wage and being able to live in Missoula, it, all sorts of quality of life issues. So I know there was some discussion tonight from public comment regarding what is the city doing regarding this, and actually, there are a lot of different things happening on this, and they all take a lot of heavy lifting and a lot of time and different entities coming together, but it is an issue that's being worked on, so I just wanted to address that.
Ms. Kears? Mr. Von Laasberg? And Ms. Basara?
I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that next week, we start the Missoula Downtown Master Plan. It kicks off with a couple of charades or design meetings on Monday, the 14th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and then from 7:00 to 9:00 at the DoubleTree Hotel. I encourage all council members to participate. That's when you can actually voice your opinions about how many hotels you might want downtown or how much housing you think it's important to have in downtown. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday is an open design studio, so anyone can go and see how the planners and the consultants are putting together the plan based on the comments that are provided by the public. And then lastly, on Friday, from 4:00 to 6:00, there's a presentation with basically a draft of that, that effort. I don't know where that is going to happen, but all this information is online, and you can just put Missoula Downtown Master Plan, and you can get all the details. Thank you.
Ms. Ramos? Mr. Hess? And Ms. West?
So I just wanted to pitch an event that's coming up. There is going to be the first-ever Missoula Soup Event on January 31st from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Free Cycles, and if you've never heard of it before, it's a, basically an exercise in community building and direct democracy where folks pitch an idea that helps Missoula in some way, and then everyone that is there gets to vote on the idea. Everyone eats soup and donates $5, and the winner takes all, but the bigger idea is that everyone there meets other people in the community to help realize those things that make Missoula an amazing place to be, and as a part of that, there is a pitch deadline that is coming up, and I believe it ends in three days and 11 hours, and it can be found on Submittable just under Missoula Soup. So if there are any amazing ideas out there that are just lacking a little bit of initiative to get going, this might be just the place to let folks know what you want to do. So, apply.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry if I got a little off-topic. As you mentioned earlier, I was in Helena today. It was the start of the 66th legislative session, and 150 representatives from all across the state were sworn in, and they have a very busy 90 days ahead of them, and I look forward to engaging with them, and will keep them in my thoughts because they have a lot of work to do. It's very important work. It affects every single one of us, and it is important that we stay engaged with our legislators, our local delegation, and I will be trying to do my best to communicate what's happening, but just think that it's something noteworthy, and we do truly have a citizen legislature. There are people from all walks of life, and the largest Native American delegation was sworn in today. There's a lot of women who were sworn in today, so we aren't quite at a reflective democracy in our legislature, but we are definitely getting there, and I think it's super important work, and I'm really happy that there are people who are willing to put themselves out there and do the hard work. And if President Von Laasberg and some of his other rocket science friends could work on the Beam Me Up Scotty technology, it would make my life going back and forth a lot better. So thank you so much.
He's totally got that worked out. He's waiting to spring it on us. Ms. Harp?
I'll start with the bad news. 65 people were disappointed today when they were notified that they did not make the cut for our first-ever local government citizens academy. However, the good news is, is that we have 35 people that are super excited to be participating in this first-time-ever academy. So to those of you who were not able to get in, please understand that it, we hold nothing personal whatsoever. There will be another opportunity in two years to do this again, and our chief, our fire chief, Jeff Brant, will actually be one of our speakers for the academy sometime, I think in late January. It should be pretty darn exciting. And the other thing I wanted to share with you all is if you have the opportunity to go over to Willard School, do so. I walked in yesterday, and I was blown away. These young people who often are downtrodden and forgotten in our community now have a school tomorrow morning when they get to go in that is light, it's inspiring, to just drive success for all of those individuals, so walk through.
Ms. Merritt?
I would just like to let folks know about an item that was in our community forum update, and that is that the nominations are open for the Outstanding Neighborhood Volunteer Award, so if you know an individual or a group that has been helping out in their community, go on to the city website, and you will pretty easily find the nomination form. We'd love to hear from you.
We have no committee reports this evening. We have one item of new business, that's a legislative update. They started. That's the end of the update for this evening. We'll have more report as the weeks wear on. Are there any additional items to be referred this evening? Seeing none, any miscellaneous reports, communications, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.